Store up site.
It was a store up site.
Yeah.
The only thing, oh, I'm sorry. He's got to sit.
Order like down through Boston's D falls.
I'll call this town of Isle Haven Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, January seventh, twenty twenty five. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Number one, roll call. Tom Anthony, Lad Olson, Don Young, Leslie Dyer, myself, Elizabeth Bunker, and Marjorie Stratton. Number two, approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seven.
All in favor? Number four, approve and sign treasures warrants. Number twenty. Oh, I said, sorry, click that off. I do that every time, don't I? Approve the minutes from the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm saying.
Approve and sign treasures warrant number twenty eight.
So moved.
Second.
Communications.
We voted.
We voted, we're all good.
Gotcha. Oh. My mind is not on this.
You're out of the groove here.
I'm not in it, I'm not into it at all, believe me. I'm sorry, pardon me. Okay, let's back up. Number four, approve and sign treasures warrants number twenty eight.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Number five, communications. Marjorie?
Oh, there was a letter from Sharon Pullman. She's getting. Well, she, yeah, she resigned from her county commissioner position.
Correct.
And she just wrote a letter to the selectmen.
And a letter from Sheriff Polk.
Well, I've been trying to get them to start negotiating a new contract. And they have a new county administrator now, but he's still kind of putting us off. The new administrator, Amber Christie, she emailed me too, and she said she just wanted to do some research and get her feet on the ground before she started to negotiate this contract. So I'm not there yet, but I'm trying to get that going. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that, or, I mean, I'm just trying to keep in touch with them and try to start negotiating the new contract.
Okay. So. Number six, speakers from the floor. Al, do you want to?
Is that where I stand?
Well, you're not on the agenda, so why don't you?
Okay, well, first of all, I'd like to apologize for not coming to the last meeting. I just let it completely slip my mind. We went to the, I went to the last ferry advisory board meeting, and Commissioner Van Note had had a separate meeting in about two weeks prior to our meeting. And there was a lot of discussion, there's a group that's running around trying to get ambulance boats, they call them, for the islands. And then when it got to Commissioner Van Note's portion of the talent show and tell, he talked about the thought of having all the ferries based on mainland. The only exception would be that Vinyl Hayward would still have its boat because we, we're the only island with two, and there's no place to put it. And immediately, people in the room started expressing their concerns about, you know, it would kill the economies of the islands to have to wait for a boat to come out from Rockland first thing in the morning, and if you have a medical emergency, and of course, they stepped right up to, well, you know, our purpose isn't to handle medical emergencies, which, I mean, ferry service has been in what, sixty odd years now, seventy years almost? And I'd hate to be the one that they said, well, it's not our job to take somebody to the hospital and have them pass away while they were waiting for. You get in an accident, you can't, can't just throw somebody on a lobster boat. Some of these people actually need to be in an ambulance, if you're having a stroke or a heart attack, or, I suppose you could deliver a baby on a lobster boat, but some of these nor'easters, if they have the south wind bounce along, I mean, they would probably pop out quite good, but might, might not be the best of situation. But all serious aside, there's an article came out in the Bangor Daily News today where Van Note says specifically that in the next two years, that's his plan, is to have the ferries all based on the mainland. And some of the selectmen have already written, like North Haven, Swans Island have already written a letter to Commissioner Van Note, objecting to it. But like Peter and I said earlier today, when chatting with each other, I think this needs to go a lot more than just writing a letter to Van Note. Van Note's already made his position. And it doesn't sound like he's, even with all this discussion that we had in the meeting with him that day at the Rockland office, doesn't seem like he's changed his position in the least bit. It's actually stepped it up now, because now it's out in the paper as, this is my plan. It wasn't just a passing thought that, what are you guys here in this room saying? Now it's, this is my plan. And the time to act, I don't know what action that we should be thinking of, but we've got to unify, unite on a one point and get our point across. And I think Leslie has a question.
What is the justification for having all the ferries on the mainland?
Well, they, what he said in his article today was that it will make it bring a better life balance to the crews, like, we have the, they call it the day crew, the mainland trip that comes here every day, seven o'clock from Rockland, that's the day crew, they call it, because they got to dock up and go home at night.
Yeah.
They also don't have to be semi standby in case of any kind of emergency. We could have, the island could sink, and they aren't going to be able to help us, they aren't going to get called to help us, because they're on the mainland. Here, you've got your crew in the crew quarters, or you've got resident crew members here. It only takes one or two phone calls, and you've got the whole crew to go. If you need the ferry for something drastic in the night, you call mainland, well, I know Peter probably could speak better on this than I can, but I believe Wick lived in Manchester, New Hampshire, and he would come on his week on, and he would hit me within the crew quarters. He's not going to commute back and forth to Manchester, so if they put him on the mainland now, they've already got a crew quarters here. Are they going to have to build a crew quarters or rent hotel rooms for all of them on the mainland?
Well, also, another thing is, they plan to replace the ferries with electric ferries, and that was their reasoning the other day at the meeting that Marjorie and I attended, that the, the charging stations, so called, would be based on the mainland, so that all the electric ferries would be based.
Well, why can't they plug them in out here?
Well, I don't know.
So the meeting, the meeting was something that the town had been told about?
It was, yes, we were invited, the Marjorie and our eye, and all the Swans, all the other islands, North Haven, just the town managers and all the chair of the select board. Marjorie and I both sat here and zoomed in on it, but it was not open to any, anybody else.
So I found it curious that the advisory board wasn't told about this.
I have, you'll have to talk to Commissioner Van Note about that. There were.
So it was Van Note, as it were, that invited this select handful of people to discuss this?
There was two, one senator representing Swans Island and whatever other district that includes, and Holly Eaton was on.
There were some legislators there as well?
Yes. You can watch the meeting on YouTube. It was, it was not, it was, excuse me, I have a lifesaver. It was not easy to understand what they were saying with, listening through Zoom. It was difficult, the audio was not good, and we, Marjorie and I didn't really know who was speaking a lot of times. Marjorie, you have a lot to add to it, I'm sure.
I had a, back to what Alan was saying about crewing, and the same, the other thing is, the ferry services had trouble in crewing these boats. Leaving them on the mainland is only going to, as you just said, there was someone that lived in Manchester, I know guys that lived the other side of Augusta. It's easier to cruise someone that can stay out here than a day trip. You're talking MDI for Swans Island, that's worse than getting a rent here, and the midcoast isn't much better.
May I? I can imagine they have some thoughts on this. They don't care.
I, I know that.
We, we all know that. As Alan said, at the advisory board meeting in November, Van Note mentioned it, Alan, he's had a meeting with a handful of people that is a public meeting, and I suppose if it's available on YouTube, the public has access to it, supposedly. Because they're moving quickly with this, I mean, two years from now, they've got a contract with the same seaward company, you know, that's the one that provided employees last summer. It's a for-profit company based in California that's owned by a bunch of venture capitalists. They're not going to be inexpensive over time. I'm, it is fortunate that at least some legislators were at this meeting. One of the things that their group of ferry service employees or the union rep has been able to do is get ahold of a bunch of legislators to ask them to discuss with the Attorney General, among other things, discuss with the Attorney General on contracting out, because that affects the state employee. I think, from my perspective, I mean, clearly, we believe the DOT doesn't care. The only people we can get any leverage from is the legislature. I think we actually have a lot of legislators that are aware that there are issues with the ferry service and issues with the way the DOT is managing it. I think that if the town can help pile on, get the legislature to consider some version of reauthorizing the ferry service, either to the point of giving very clear instructions to the DOT on what services they'll provide, or in effect, having it, taking it away from the DOT, because if, if just giving them instructions on what to provide doesn't separate us from the problems down the road that the DOT doesn't care. And I, so I think encouraging that and encouraging our representatives and the legislature to kind of move forward with, with something that separates the DOT from the ferry service might be very helpful for all of the communities that they're supposed to serve.
Pam, if I could, would you, would you agree, you have a long, long history with the ferry service, was the ferry service a better entity when it was coming out of the general fund and not run through the DOT? Would you, would you agree with that?
I, I have no idea. My experience started about thirty years ago, and it was shortly after Dick Spear got done. And my sense is that since then, regardless of where the funding comes from, the fact that the DOT, DOT Commissioner, DOT senior personnel have been involved has undermined the effectiveness of the ferry service. And as we've seen, I mean, in some cases not seen, they aren't, they are failing to do very simple things that would provide a better customer service, and they're, they're making no effort to do that. One of the things that is difficult for me is to clarify down just clear items of where that's happened, but across the board, in my experience, they have failed to make the most rudimentary changes or have any conversation about it. They've been completely opaque, there's no transparency, I mean, even this conversation, I'm quite sure they're, they're not talking to the employees about whether the employees want to move to within commuting distance of the mainland terminal.
I think, to, to put it in a nutshell, as far as the commissioner is concerned, and his comment was, we are taking millions of dollars to pay for twenty-eight hundred people. They don't care about what, any of the islands, they have, he has no empathy, and he was very condescending, and I really recommend that you guys watch the meeting on YouTube. And I don't know, we have the link, I don't have it right here, but you can get the link. Marjorie, you can put it on the website.
It may be on the ferry service website.
Yeah, I can't remember where it is.
I wasn't aware of that meeting, so I don't know.
No, it was.
We brought up at the December meeting that they got to start emphasizing more on the website, because not everybody has Facebook or Twitter, but some people don't even have Wi-Fi service, so.
It doesn't say, it's just, what I have for a link doesn't say anything about government.
And the thing is, that's the link to the meeting.
This is to the YouTube.
Oh, that's to the YouTube?
Yeah.
Marjorie? Did I get the wrong impression today when I was reading about John Emerson's thing? Because from there, it sounded like Mills maybe, may not have been involved and might get involved.
John Emerson, what Donald was talking about is an email that came in from John Emerson, and he said that he called the governor because he had.
What's your number?
I've got so much paperwork here, I'm sorry.
John's from North Haven. This is Carrie, uh, Carrie Advisory Board.
That she was not aware of these issues, and that she would look into it, and she was not behind the changes that Van Note is trying to implement. That was what I got out of the message from John Emerson.
That's what I was reading.
Yeah.
However, is she, but she is encouraging or in agreement with changing all the ferries to electric vessels, correct?
That is what, this was a very short email.
Right, but is that, do you, have you read anything about the electric?
No.
I don't know.
No, no.
Peter?
I can't remember who sent the letter, I think it may have come from here, but there was a letter last summer, if I remember correctly, from the governor, saying what's going on, and her response was, I'm going to pass this to Commissioner Van.
That's what we were told.
So now she's telling John Emerson that she didn't know anything about it.
So we don't know what the real story is.
The other part, Neil, I get, I have a skinny million questions that I'm hoping I can get somebody to ask. I mean, I keep trying myself, but I don't get very far. Is it up to the DOT Commissioner to decide? I mean, that's to me is a, is a, you know, does a Commissioner get to decide that the boats are based on the mainland?
He should.
And it makes, it brings to me, to my mind, a question of a tariff. I mean, what is the tariff? Because the tariff specifically says that they will provide emergency trips, given some criteria, but if the boat's on the mainland, you can't be doing it. The Commissioner is saying.
Wait three, four hours.
The Commissioner is saying, well, we'll buy everybody a boat, and then you maintain and operate them. And the annual bill for that was, you know, astronomical, and professionally, my take on it is it's unmanageable. So he's running his mouth, saying stuff that people will hear and believe that aren't possible, you know, and, 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 yeah, in amongst the things that they're not doing. They're making no effort to compensate the crews to be available for emergency trips, which is one of the things that we all think is really important.
Well, you should listen, really listen to the meeting, watch the YouTube video, and you'll hear a few other things that will, is quite shocking, that was said. So, all right, Al?
I, I may have been disillusioned by the, hey, do you want to be on the ferry advisory board? Yeah, I, I think that'd be a good job, but I look at the, I kind of think that the ferry advisory board is to the DOT what you are to the town. You, you're appointed by the town, because not everybody in town can come up here every week and decide how, what dollar is going to go here, what dollar's going to go there. We can trust you guys, under guidance, to set, you set the direction of the town, you call on people as few as they may be here tonight, or fewer, and you say, hey, are we going in the right direction? Do you want us to do something different? Are you pleased with this? You don't just take it upon yourself, say, oh, I think I'm going to spend twenty thousand dollars, that'll look kind of good sitting up here. Well, the town, the town ought to do this, or they ought to do that. You don't take it upon yourself. But when I go to the ferry advisory board meetings, I always thought that the DOT would be on one side of the table, and the islands would be on the other, and there would be a, what, what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong, what do you need, what do you like, what would you like to see in the future, do you want to go on this path, do you want to change it? I feel like we're just sitting there, and what used to be suggestions or off-the-wall comments are suddenly being handed to us as, what do you think of this? But it's in a stone engraved pallet, it's already been set out, you can't make any changes. It's already set, and this is the way you're going to do it, and, oh, by the way, let's go up to Belfast, and we'll have a hundred people from all over the area coming, we'll have a public meeting, we won't change nothing, but we'll have a public meeting, we'll smile, we'll tell you, yes, we'll consider what you say, and go back out to your car, sit in your car until then, and then, why, that's over, and now it can go on to do some real work. It's just, they just snowball us.
As he said in that meeting the other day, Marjorie, I'm sure, well, Marjorie, you were six, I was hard, but, but he said, Van Note said, the islands want what the islands want. And he does not appreciate that, and in other words, we're like spoiled little kids asking for unreasonable things. And, I mean, if, like I say, watch the video and make sure you have something that you can tear apart, or.
Something that's wrong.
Yeah.
Could, could we look into maybe setting up a meeting with the other islands and discussing this on a, like a unanimous front, and, because we've got guys like, I know, I'm pretty sure John has a, like a personal relationship with the governor.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
He, he, he knows her, and pool together our resources to start really fighting this?
I think we need to have our legislators that represent us help us facilitate all this, because our two people don't even talk to us.
Right.
Holly Eaton was on that meeting, she never said one word. In fact, she turned her video off, her camera was off.
That's what I mean, if we can maybe get with the other islands and see if we can get another, because obviously, our legislature is not, not helping, we'll need, we need to get the ear of somebody else.
Yeah, I don't know how Alsboro, she didn't say anything during the meeting.
Janet?
She had some good.
Facial expressions.
She did not have a poker face.
She was communicating with me.
Yeah.
I think Vlad's idea, I think Vlad's idea is a good idea, and we should also invite the legislators to, that represent our areas, to come to the meeting too, and, not that they will, but we can say, hey, we invited you guys, and you never bothered to show up, but I think.
That's a positive.
Banding the islands together and having a meeting, it's a first step, it's a strong first step, because, like Al said, they're just going to steamroll through, they don't give a flying you-know-what, what we have to say, how we feel, because the islands want what the islands want.
They're looking at bottom line.
It's all about finance.
Their entire bottom is, their entire focus is, how can we make this as affordable as possible? And this is taking it, the DOT is a big entity, we're a little small drop in the water for them.
Right.
And they don't, and I understand, we're a pain in their neck, probably a little lower, and it's, it's a big, but it's a large number in their budget, but it's really a small number in their budget, this ferry service entity.
I don't, and I don't see how electric boats are going to be.
Feasible?
Feasible? I don't.
Can I speak to that just a little?
Well, they're all built, they're being built as we speak, so.
I know.
Can I just say something, Peter?
Yeah.
Just a couple more minutes, then we're going to move on.
Yeah, yeah, I'm.
That's fine.
I get excited, but. They're building a hybrid, they've got a request to design a fully electric one for Islesborough. As I understand it, those can work, you know, they can. I think that there's nothing wrong with them conceptually, there's a lot of people in a lot of places that are using fully electric boats for relatively short runs, like what we will be doing. That's not the problem, the problem is the DOT.
Well, before we do go off, though, I think we've been around and around this thing now for months, and until we actually set a plan and get the islands together, ain't nothing happened. You guys aren't doing anything, we're not doing anything, and the result, they can do what they want, because we're not organized.
Exactly, that's what I, that's what I.
I don't think it matters how many letters that we've written and talked to and whatnot, so.
So, you know, you know, even if it's, maybe it's just the, the town managers of the islands and the chair and buddy chairs getting together to, as a, I don't know, it's not, we need to, we need to start focusing on, on organizing the islands as a group to be advocates, not individually, but as a group, for the interests, our interests, when it comes to the ferry service. Maybe the DOT doesn't, shouldn't be in charge of the ferry service, and maybe that's what we need to look at, the ferry service is its own entity, just tough throwing ideas out there.
Before we do anything else, down that line.
They pull for sales, not the whole works, what they want to do.
Right.
Marjorie, is it feasible for you then to put something together with the town manager and see what's the best, what's the best vehicle to?
To get, I mean, even if it's a Zoom meeting.
Set, yeah.
Oh, awesome.
Otherwise, we haven't, we don't.
Yes, it would have to be Zoom, and I think, I think as many selectmen as possible should be in the meeting.
I, I kind of curious what the, like, maybe litigation-wise, what options you'd have.
Then they can give us board members.
Right. Well, you guys should be at the meeting too.
Well, I mean, like.
Marjorie?
I, I represent Vinyl Hayward, every island and every town is, has a representative, but if you give us something to fight with.
Right.
Marjorie, you got to handle.
Well, there is a ferry advisory board meeting on January twenty-third, would be an opportunity to network with some of the representatives, and typically, some of the legislators come to those meetings, not every time, every, I just wanted to mention again that I will be away most of the month of February, so I'm happy to put something out there, but, you know, I may not be the best person at this point in time to try to get a meeting together, if you want it to happen fairly soon. But maybe on January twenty-third, it would at least be an opportunity to network with the ferry advisory board members and other people that attend those meetings.
It's probably worth sending a note, though, to the other town managers that we've met, and we're discussing this, just so that they're prepped, and rather than waiting for the advisory board.
But did you want me to try to set a date, or?
Just, maybe just a feeler, to see. To gauge the interest, I'm sure there's probably plenty of interest. I would, I would.
Try to get a date.
But try to set a date.
I mean, maybe if we could try to get a date sooner rather than later, before that ferry advisory meeting, so maybe we could talk, and then they could go.
Exactly.
We can go to our representatives and say, well, this is what, come of that meeting, and they can go to their representatives and say, this is what has come of, of that meeting, to at least start, I mean, this is probably going to be a several meeting, this is not a one meeting, and.
So that's only ten days.
You can also get maybe a preview of what the other islands already started to sell.
Yeah.
I mean, I read, I read, read the letter that North Haven sent, and a lot of that letter did pertain to us, but like, as you said, the, the one thing we got going for us is we do have two boats, for now. So the dock space, like, we, we probably will, we'll have our boat here. That was the large majority of their letter was.
Mostly they, it was focusing on the, on moving the fairs to the, um, mainland port.
But a lot of the other issues we, we do.
We'd share in common, yeah. All right. Um, if there's nothing else, um, we'll move on. Everybody all set?
Yeah, we'll, we'll just hear.
Madri's gonna.
So your suggestion is to ha, try to get a meeting, like, for instance, the week of January thirteenth, the week before the advisory board meeting?
If possible. May not be possible. Yeah, if possible. But they contact immediately, one way or another.
All right, um, we'll move on to number seven, committee and departmental reports and appointments. And here we go. A downtown project. Who's in charge? Are you?
Yeah, me.
You want her. No, not you. Gabe, you wanna take over?
I guess I, guess I am in charge. Um, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sorry, babe.
No, no, this is good. Thank you so much. Um, yeah, so I think, um, we have a couple of things. One is we, um, I think, you know, I sent you all an email just, uh, just kind of outlining where we were at with, um, the parking lot designs for phase two. And wanting to be able to move forward with those designs, meaning, um, you know, uh, being able to get, you know, any feedback that you have on, on them, but also hoping that you will make a motion to approve those so we can finalize them. Um, even if there's a few caveats, um, finalize them and be able to put the bid package together. Um, so we can get that approved by the funder. So we're not, um, you know, delaying anymore and can start to move forward with that part of the project. So that's, um, I think, step one. And, um, I know we have the water district building on the, on the agenda as well too. I'm not sure if that's, um, a separate thing, if that's part of the, uh, the downtown project update. But I think, um, I'm not sure if everyone has a copy of the parking lot design there. I'm also happy to, you know, share, share it on the screen, but.
Put, put to this, um, here we go. This is the issue, I was up here this afternoon talking to him, but. Vlad, so this is, um, this is where you go, so I'm covered up there. You're not gonna be able to drive through here.
Oh, sorry. I hear you talking. I'm sorry.
Okay, hold on a minute.
Not many people do anyway.
No, it's, this is the biggest of the big deal. The, the owners don't want.
Excuse me, guys. Gabe was talking.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead, Gabe.
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, I think our hope was that, you know, if you do need time to review it, that's kind of why we're hoping folks would review it, um, today. If you need additional time to review and share comments, and I mean, um, you know, maybe, maybe you wanna wait to vote to approve it. But we can certainly, while Brian is here, you know, like, answer any questions about it. I will just share the general comments. And I don't think these are very different than what we've heard all along. There were a few things that sort of go back and forth depending on who we talked to. Um, you know, we're trying to balance a lot of, uh, different ideas for how the parking lots are going to be used or are being used, um, and who they need to accommodate. And I think it's pretty clear that, you know, there was consensus with the fish plant parking lot. And we haven't really had, you know, much, I would say, I don't even wanna call it controversy, much dispute about the changes that were recommended there. I mean, they're all very much in support of, um, the fishermen and the working waterfront community and how people use that, um, area. And then the downtown parking lot, um, you know, we recognize is still essential, especially for fishermen with smaller boats. And just being able to load and off, uh, load traps there is, is really critical. And also, we recognize that, you know, based on everything we've heard from folks, it's just the fish plant parking lot, for whatever reason, just doesn't accommodate everybody. So, um, you know, we've gone through several different iterations, a lot of back and forth, try, again, trying to balance needs. The biggest issues that, um, have been raised, um, are concerns about how elevating the parking lot by eighteen inches, um, will impact the surrounding properties, meaning, specifically the tide water and, um, the former Haven, the current Dot Millie's building. Um, that is a concern that those property owners have. And additional concerns, um, that were highlighted today were related to, um, the fact that the town driveway by the fire hall with the new design would, um, eliminate that being a sort of a loop driveway where you can access it from the parking, you can access it with a vehicle from the parking lot and drive, you know, uh, drive a loop that way um, around to Dot Millie's. Hopefully that makes sense. Um, and so that has been raised as a concern. Um, we've discussed it both ways, um, but today that was raised. And then I think, um, you know, Lad, Lad raised an issue today with how things look on the plan. Regarding where the eagle is currently, um, shown to be located. That that, um, is area that could be used, um, and is used for, um, loading and, um, offloading traps. And, uh, it, it's also critical storage space. So, you know, is that an area that we could somehow open back up, um, and make accessible? You know, whether it's additional parking or simply, uh, accessible space for, um, trap storage, um, while people are, um, loading and unloading there. Um, and so I'm gonna just ask Brent, if I, did that capture what, the, like, the main things that we heard that, that either were reemphasized from the, the concerns that we've heard before and anything new?
I think that captures. I think the one thing that it didn't capture is there's some concern on the drainage system and the vibe and the, and the backflow prevention. I think that it was raised as well as making sure that didn't freeze.
Okay, right, sorry, yep.
The elevation and stuff like that to make sure that wouldn't freeze and create an issue. And so I said, we'd look into that. We haven't experienced that in our other projects, but I think it's something we need to look back and report back to you. So I think that was the other, that was the other thing that was raised during it, during the meeting.
Okay. Um, so I'm not sure how you all wanna proceed because if, if this is your first time looking at the design, you may want to take more time to look at it. But I guess I have to kind of turn it back over to you, maybe Pam, and make a determination of how you would like to proceed. Um, you know, and certainly, obviously Brent's here. You know, folks wanna ask him questions and stuff, but.
Okay. Um, so some of you have never seen the, the plans before?
I haven't yet.
And you had to do, you didn't come up this afternoon?
No, I was on the mainland.
Okay. Um, Millie, you had a question?
Well, I was just, I was kind of being, got this advocate on, um, Vlad's comment. If, if the fishermen would follow the ordinance, there would be a storage issue down there this time. But, um, right now, these traps have been there for two weeks and the parking lot's full.
My, my, my issue wasn't with, with the storage. It was actually, I agree with you with the trailer in, trailer out, how they have the eagle in the, the, the parking lot bumpers. You wouldn't be able to, yes, you wouldn't be able to, like, back a trailer up in there, um, to have a boat unload and offload. I a hundred percent agree with you. I think it should be trailer in, trailer out. I was just trying to keep as much access open to that part a, a, as possible, is what, is where my point was coming from. You and Brent talked about it. And then the, the only, the other issue I had was that code freezes up. It's not like the harbor freezing. There's a lot of fresh water that runs through there. And Brett had acknowledged that. And there are other places where they put those, like, check valves, uh, for the drainage. That wasn't an issue. So they were gonna go back and, and look at that habit.
Okay. And so what did you decide to do with the eagle, Brent?
Pam, I like that. Put it on him. Poor friend.
I think eagle's in perfect location.
Okay.
I would say if I could, can I stand and say a couple of things?
Yes, of course.
On all of those things would be, I think that when you look at these plans, they're not, there can be changes as we go forward. They're not like, if you lock it in tonight, you'll never see anything other than that. I think to address some of those concerns would be, where the eagle's at, I think that one of the things we're looking at is on that parking lot, we're gonna raise it up. If this is the edge of the parking lot, we're gonna raise that parking lot up eighteen inches. I think the concern that's been raised is when you do that, then the bumpers that go on that go above that eighteen inch, right? And can we put into the design an area that maybe that bumper is a little more flexible in some areas so that the fishermen have access? And so they're not having to jump over an eighteen-foot higher edge, but they also have that, that bumper that's on it. Can we make that bumper a little more removable or flexible in some areas so we can allow fishermen to have access and not cause them undo? The answer is yes. The answer is, I've said that, like, we haven't come up with a solution yet. But if you approve the plan, the final plan will have a solution that will allow that to happen. So you've got at least an area, if not two, along that wall that you can get access for fishermen that doesn't have to lift it over the bumper and that. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, the area that the drive goes around, you know, the, the fire station, onto the parking lot. We've gone back and forth with that a lot of times as far as maximizing parking, providing access. And so the one thing I'll say is, if you look at the plan, where that drive comes along, the drive is at the same grade as the sidewalk, as where those parking bumpers are in the parking spaces. And so we didn't create a wall there or anything that would prevent something from happening. So if you decided at some point in time to remove those bumpers that are just the parking bumpers, like concrete parking bumpers that you roll up to, if you removed a couple of bumpers and had a couple of spaces, it's all at grade. Now, it's parking lot, it's sidewalk, it's gravel road, it's all at the grade. So like, you could decide what you wanted to do with that, that would, so you could say, hey, Brent, I, I wanna lose those two parking spaces. I want you to take those bumpers out of there. And I want that road to continue to be used. It's okay. It doesn't, that doesn't change the grant person giving you money and stuff like that. It's a, it's a decision that you've made. We've tried to separate parking from the, the sidewalk with some bumpers so people don't drive past the parking lot. So that's all we've tried to do. And so if you decided that ultimately at the final, when this goes out to bid, you said, I've really decided, it's all at grade. I want it to be this kind of surface here and here. I, I want, they can drive over the sidewalk and get access at the parking lot. I'll lose two parking spaces. We can block them out. You can decide to do that. That's, that's not really a change to the plan. That's a decision you can make today, a month from now, or two months from now. And so it'll all, it'll all work. And so there's nothing on the plans to prevent that. And so I just wouldn't want you to think like you're, you're locking in, you can't do it. And so, yes.
We had talked about adding a hoist.
Yes.
To the parking lot because of the eighteen inches. Just making it a little easier to get traps off and on.
So back and forth on that, what we said is, you know, we, we had originally had shown a hoist there. I think through the discussions we had is, we can do anything we want to later. At this point in time, let's not do that. Let's not show the hoist. And so we hadn't hoist shown. We've removed it from the plans. Again, the thought was that is not the, that is not the fishing parking lot. It's used by fishermen, but to try to at some, encourage more use down at the other parking lot. And you can always do something like that later. So rather than show it now and encourage it, is to not show it now. So we've got a space for it. We don't show it.
Just to, just to clarify to Leslie, I think i, i, in what Brent shared earlier is that if the parking lot is elevated eighteen inches, what we're trying to determine is what type of sill, he was calling it like a bumper, could, could be removable. So essentially fishermen would be loading and offloading at the same height that they are now, cause they have to reach up over that eighteen-inch sill.
And later on, if it, if it is a problem, then we can add a hoist.
Add a hoist, yep. We've got a spot for it. And I think, I think it's actually shown on the, the second plan. I think we, we, we didn't remove it on the, if you flip the plan. I think down in the corner, closest to you, I think we didn't remove it on this.
Yeah. I mean, just so it's on, you know, those people listening, my, my biggest concern in which you just answered was just making sure where those two parking places are, where the eagle is, where this, like, green space is, that, that is all the same grade.
Same grade.
Cause I would hate to see us, like, permanently change that area. So then, if we do need to get a, a big truck or something in and around for us, you know, we, for the foul fire hall, you know, worst case, we have to move those cement barriers. I just didn't wanna see that become different grades, so that.
We have a drop-off of the parking lot down there.
Yeah, so we, so, so, you know, we can't predict everything in the future and be like, ew, wish we hadn't done that. But if we leave it all flat, then we're good together.
Let's just say we wanted to, we decided we wanted to put the eagle up here on this empty space instead of back here next to the waterfront. That's not an issue.
You're buying me a beverage. We've moved that eagle so many places in that parking lot right now. I don't think there's a place we haven't showed that eagle at one point in time.
I'm not talking about the plan. I'm talking about down the road.
Yeah, the, what's that? Yeah.
There's one place it hasn't been shown.
I think that, I think that looked good on Flying Cow Lane myself.
So.
We get a lot of.
Out in the middle of the harbor is a morgue.
I would say, I think Gabe brought this up earlier too. When we did the public meeting at the school, I think we got a lot of very positive feedback from the kids about how they felt about the eagle that I think put, all we paused a little bit to say, maybe there's a little more affection for that eagle within the younger generation than we might think. And so it, with that, I think what we've shown is I, and I think people got some feedback to say, hey, let's get it out so it's not blocking traffic. So we, we got a sightline.
Right.
Let's put it back in a place that maybe, it may be more photogenic. You can take a picture back there. Maybe it's a little easier to take a selfie and stuff like that. But I think there's some affection, it certainly came out of that meeting, for the eagle that I think we were all surprised at.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they'll need to have that so they can throw a beer bottle at it when they're in high school. Um, why can't it go?
Okay, so.
Why can't it, why, the question that I haven't heard, and it got brought up earlier, why can't the eagle go up by the gallamander? In, in, in that area? Like, I, I, through all this, I've never heard that until this afternoon we're in here, that being suggested. Why, why can't it go up there and then completely eliminate this thing from the parking lot issue?
All right, that's a whole nother, that's a whole issue.
We've got a spot for it. So as far as our plan, we've got a spot for it. So that's a good idea. The other thing I wanna make sure, because I think there was concern about the height, the height of the parking lot. And I think that came up with some people. So the existing, the edge of the existing fish plant parking lot is elevation ten. The elevation at the missile parking lot is about elevation eight and a half. What we're saying is we're gonna raise that to elevation ten, which is exactly the same elevation as the edge of the fish plant parking lot. So when people are talking about like, whoa, it's, we're not doing anything different than what you currently have at the other parking lot.
But it's different. That's all it takes.
But it's different. And so just in context, that's the same elevation that we've got down there. We're not raising that one. At one point in time, we had thought because of what we were trying to do and trying to gas an elevation, at one point in time, we had a design iteration that actually had that one. And we got really strong feedback to say, looks like it's working. There's a lot of things going on down there. The, the ideas you have is about, you know, the concrete along the wall, it's the right elevation. We've got strow mortar coming down. Make it flexible, keep it flexible, let the boat where it be used. We heard that loud and clear. And what you see down there is the results of all that feedback. But that's the same elevation that we're proposing to put this parking lot at. So that's just the context I wanna pay.
Hey, Gabe, quick question. Uh, I'm assuming when we started this program, like, the first phase, we had a budget put together. So with the plans you have now, are we gonna be coming back looking for more money and wanting to get a quote back? Cause I'm assuming if you had an original budget, it probably is not very accurate today.
Is the question about just the parking lots?
Yeah. That, that, this phase of the project.
That, that, this phase of the project, are we going to be, we have, do we have funds that will cover it?
We're hopeful that we do. We haven't bid this phase. So if you have, we've bid the other phase. And so we bid the, the main street. So we bid the water line, the main street, the stormwater. So we at least bid it and got some prices. And so in the work that we've, you know, also done so far is reflecting of what we got for prices as far as what we need for more money. And so I think that one we feel have certain confidence on. We haven't put this out to bid yet. And so, yes, we haven't changed the number. I think there might be some flexibility with some of the other funding that you have that might be applied to this. Gabe, do you want to talk a little more?
I wouldn't say that's correct. We've been very, um, you haven't talked much about the congressionally directed spending or the EPA money that we're receiving. Um, that's 1.4 million. And, um, there, you know, it's, it's designated, you know, in our project for specific things related to, um, storm water and sewer. But we also have flexibility with that funding. So I think we've been trying to just keep that in mind. Um, and, you know, not, not look at that money for anything other than sort of like, okay, that's our buffer for if we, um, go over with, uh, in our, in our, but, um, in our bids for, for this part of the project, the parking lots part.
Because I'd be very upset if we have to go back and ask for more money.
You would be, Dawn. You would be upset.
We would all be very upset.
I think a lot of people would quit.
But good question. That's a good question. We have not bid this piece yet.
But you still must have a budget that you went after grants with and some concepts. So we'd be good as soon as possible. See how realistic that number is.
Yeah.
So.
We haven't changed, so all the iterations back and forth on the designs back and forth, there haven't been a lot of increases to that. So we haven't done things that we've said, oh, that's different than we originally thought. And so we have an increase. That doesn't mean the cost. That doesn't mean the cost might not have gone up, but we haven't added to what we said we were going to do back then.
But I mean, I'm more concerned about contracting cost than anything else. But you don't control those.
Finding contractors is a challenge.
Okay, so, um.
Sorry.
No, go ahead, Gabe.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to go back to the point of, um, because I feel like we, we, you know, the, okay, I'll just say, I want to go back to the point of the, the concerns of the abutting property owners about elevating the parking lot. I think we, we had, you know, we asked Brent and his team to look at that. They did, um, uh, some modeling to that, you know, regarding that area and what it would look like with, with, um, the elevation of the parking lot. And the, and the idea was that it would, um, potentially push more water. Uh, I think mostly towards the boat ramp, but, um, you know, potentially like around either side of the parking lot. And that is a concern of the, and I, I know I expressed this in the email that I sent to you. Um, that's a concern, a concern of the property owners that it would increase, um, their risk of flooding. And I think other people have concerns that, you know, it means more water is going to flow out onto Main Street from, um, you know, around the, like Victoria Olson's building or underneath Dot Millie's. Um, and so I just want to make sure like, you know, that again, that you're aware of that. Um, and if you haven't seen the memo and listened to Kevin Trainor's, um, presentation when he presented those findings, if you wanted to have an opportunity to do that. And I'm just saying this because I think, you know, if you go all the way back to 2016 and you look at the initial, um, downtown vulnerability assessment that the town had, um, uh, ransom engineering do, which, you know, this project is kind of based on a lot of that, um, information uh, that, you know, they talk, they talk about, they make it very clear that, you know, in, in mitigating sea level rise, in mitigating storm surge, you only have so many options. You can mitigate by, you know, accommodating, um, which means you just kind of like live with it and you do things to prepare. But you recognize that the water is coming and, you know, you, you just take action to prepare for that. The other piece is you retreat, you know, you say this isn't, the cost benefit of keeping these structures here is just not worth it. Um, so we find a different location for them or we adapt the, the buildings. And the adaptation is usually elevation. And that's, or, you know, you can armor your buildings or you can, you know, elevate and armor. And, and, and so the ransom memo makes that very clear and says, you know, the town only has, um, you know, limited purview because it only owns so much public infrastructure. And we talked about this, I think, last time and have talked about it through the course of, you know, certainly recently in these conversations because the parking lot elevation has raised these issues. Is that, you know, the question of do you raise it eighteen inches or not at all? You know, and the question, it's not a question of do you raise it eighteen inches? Or do you raise it four feet? We're not talking about raising it four feet, which is an actual mitigation elevation. This elevation is helping us, you know, achieve the things we need to achieve with our stormwater system. It provides a little bit more buffer to those higher tides. Um, but, you know, there can, you know, I think if you look out at other projects across the country, you know, some actions that towns take have unintended consequences to surrounding properties. Uh, you know, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. And I think that's why we wanted to have the modeling done and wanted to make an informed decision about whether or not elevating the, the parking lot would have a significant impact. The project team doesn't feel like based on the memo that it does, but the property owners do. And I just want to make that very clear. So they're not, you know, not being represented in their opinion. And then also just give you folks the opportunity to look at that memo, look at the presentation, um, that Kevin shared with us, uh, from his modeling study. And, you know, be able to make your own informed decision. I feel, I think we feel strongly that we want to elevate it eighteen inches. It's been part of the project. It's something we feel like we need to do. Um, but I, but like I said, I just feel like we need to make that clear to you. Um, so you're, you're making an informed decision.
Um, and like you said, Gabe, it's basically to help with the extremely high tides. As far as the storm surge is concerned, it's going to go where it's going to go. The parking lot isn't going to stop it. It's not going to divert the water. It's still going to be storm surge. It's still going to go where it's going to go. So raising it eighteen inches is not going to make a difference when it comes to storm surge.
Yeah, and I think everyone's clear about that. I think that, that they've accept, you know, accepted that, that that's, they understand that. Um, I think it's just, you know, it's like, are we causing undue harm? And I think our opinion is that these, like, everyone is flooding now and, you know, are we going to cause more flooding? Um, I, I, I don't see the evidence of that, but, um, maybe just the fact that it's like one to four inches of water being directed somewhere is enough to, you know, ha, raise that concern. So.
You're going to change the flow rate, not the overall height. Believe it. That ocean's going to be, the height is going to be, if you, if you have it uh, lower those blocks, it will be a higher flow rate for a period of time.
I guess I, I would, I would also say like, I think it's pretty clear, like in my mind, like that this project is what it is. And that if the town is like, I feel like we're probably ready or like just about ready to have these serious conversations. And it is going to require people making tough decisions about adapting their buildings or taking other measures. Because if buildings stay the way they are, the decision will be made for people. Buildings will be damaged, buildings will be lost. And we've already seen that to some degree. And we will continue to see that with increasing the extreme storms. So the question just becomes is as a community, do we want to try to, you know, cooperatively, collaboratively come up with ideas that can benefit, you know, property owners and the majority of, um, people that, you know, benefit from the downtown, which I guess is most everyone on the island. Um, and I think we have study money, you know, that's going to enable us to do some of that and look at different options and how much would it cost? You know, if certain, you know, if people were to, you know, adapt their buildings. But, um, you know, it will take private investment and, and people will need to make those decisions for themselves. So um, I, it's not, there's no simple answer here and nothing is clean. There's not a magic wand. Um, and I think looking at this project for what it is, an infrastructure project, um, with some elevation components based on the way we can elevate, which is a very limited way. So.
We can be the new Venice.
Okay, that makes perfect sense. So, um, my, I have a question. So you want us to, um, uh, approve the design of the Main Street parking lot is the, um, the fish plant parking lot a separate motion?
I think it's both the parking lots, that, that, just the designs for both the parking lots.
Okay, it just says here, Main Street parking lot design. So, oh, you don't have the agenda, do you?
Well, I should be looking at it, but.
No, that could be my bad too. That's okay.
I have a question before we, so these changes that we've talked, it sounds like some of the changes probably will, will, will happen or be, well, like, what assurance is that we are going to see that when this comes? Like, if we approve this tonight, uh, you know, some of the, the stuff we discussed this afternoon, we're going to look into, I just want to make sure it actually.
I wasn't, I wasn't here this afternoon, so I don't know exactly what the conversation was.
I would say condition. If you approve it, it's with conditions. I mean, you're talking.
Yeah, that's.
So add that into the motion. Okay.
That's at grade, that actually the, like, those two parking spaces, those, you know, that access to like that, that is, that is still in flux. That's still, you know, you know, given approval, what you're saying is approving it, that is still something that needs to be resolved, but it's not the grade, we can do it.
Okay.
And so same thing, like you've got, there's a couple of places on the parking lot that you'd like us to explore, some sort of a temporary removable edge. So you've got good app, we can do that.
So just make the motion.
With those, with those conditions, I think we can still go.
Okay, that's what I'll do then. All right. I just wanted to be clear on how that was supposed to read. All right. So is everybody done with questions?
Yes.
And Gabe, are you all set with what you mean?
Yeah, I just will say, like, I haven't put these parking lot plans online yet, but I will do that. And I'm saying this for the benefit of people who might be listening or watching. Um, so if you go to the town website, Downtown Project, I will post them on that first Downtown Project page. And just keep in mind, like we said, there will be some further iterations based on what was shared, uh, today.
Right. And also to keep in mind that they're available here.
They are available. People can come in.
Up close, instead of looking online.
Yep. And I can also email them. I have a couple of people, uh, that I'm going to email them to. So, um, if anyone wants, you know, them emailed, you could email Elizabeth, you could email me, you could email Marjorie. We can email them too.
Okay. All right, great. So are we all set then to, I'll make the motion that we, um, accept the Main Street and the fish plant parking lot designs with conditions.
Second.
Is that a second link? Okay. All in favor? Okay. It's done.
Okay, great. That's super helpful. Now we can move forward with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gabe.
So I'll go back to number one, the USDA grant. Was that something separate from all of this?
I think it was just on there, uh, the December meeting, we said we might have heard something by January, but maybe not yet.
Late January.
Late, okay. So maybe by the next one.
Yeah, okay.
And that's the stormwater.
Yes.
Um, you all set, Brent, on that then?
Yeah, I'd like, can I say one thing?
Absolutely. One thing.
So this is a really nice opportunity to get, you know, some grant money to finish this off. And I would just think that the town and Civil Rights Committee and Gabe and, and have really done a great job of helping pull the information together. This is not an easy ask. This is a very specific ask about a storm in December of 2022, right? And so not easy to get. And really the information that you all supplied to be able to allow this to happen is why it's happening. And so it's not an easy game to gather the information, but you rallied, you did it, got it together. And so that's why we're going forward.
Okay.
I appreciate that too, Brent, because I think a shout out to especially like Margaret and Linnell who monitor the parking lot area and their commitment to their tide trackers tracking. Um, this is why we collect data and it's why we take photographs. So.
Okay. Thank you, Brent, for that. And we will move on to number three, review and approve water district building plans. Did they, um, come through yet or is that going to be a couple more weeks? The final draft?
Of the plans?
Yeah.
Uh, a couple more weeks.
I think, I think it'd be two, probably two.
You just approved it a week ago.
And we did this at the last meeting?
We, we approved it before.
Right. But did we ever get the, the final draft? Will be in two weeks?
Or something like that.
Two weeks-ish.
Something like that. I'm just kidding with her. She always says two weeks.
So we were trying to remember what, what you have seen already as a select board. Have, have you seen anything yet in terms of the, the site designs or the building designs?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. So I can, so I think, I think, um, is our goal tonight to have you guys sign off on this as well? I guess I wasn't, I, either my memory is failing me or, um,
Mine, mine.
Well, well, the thing is, when we say they're not, we, they're not finished. That's, that's not that the designs aren't done. It means that the, all of the entire package of the technical specifications aren't done. If we share, um, we can share with you what, um, things look like. And these are just a few pages of the, I don't know how many pages of the technical, um.
Yeah, no, I, it'll be a couple more weeks.
But I, I think what you're going to find is like, you're not going to see, unless you're walking through every single, um, technical specification in your next review is you're going to essentially be seeing the same thing. Um, you're not, you're not going to really see it as any different than, than what, what we, what we have tonight. Is that correct, Brent? I think that's what we talked about. It's really just building off of what's there. Like nothing, nothing really changes. It just gets added to. I mean, do you, do you want us to walk through it really quick or, or what's your?
We've actually been tied up enough, I think. But what I was going to say is it'd be nice to make sure on this one as well that, uh, the budget numbers we had are still good.
This is all part of phase two, right?
Yes. The only thing we're going to, so we'll get it. So we've got the design you see in front of you, mechanical, electrical, structural, architectural, it's all, all the, something. The specs are done. The one thing that's remaining is we haven't been like the front end pieces, all the, all the kind of rules and regulations that the funding ADCs require. We haven't added that to it yet, but we've done technical specifications, no car things. I guess it's, it's ninety-five percent done. We just haven't added that kind of front end stuff that the ADCs want to look at with, you know, Davis Bacon wages. That, that's what we want.
Okay. So it sounds like you all want us to wait till we have that final package ready and then you, you will be prepared to sign off on it?
But the water district has approved it, right? You should say.
Yeah, yes. We're just waiting for the select board to give a thumbs up on it.
Yeah, no, we, we approved it last, I can't.
Last week?
Two weeks.
Yeah, whenever it was. I don't know. It's been so many meetings. And we meet again on the fourteenth. So.
The district does, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So I guess what I'm trying to determine is tonight, are we trying to get a approval from the select board or are we, are we asking?
I don't know. That's why.
Well, I guess it's your comfort level, select board. I mean, it'd be helpful to us, I think, just so, just like the other designs, we can keep moving forward and know that you're good with it. Dawn, I heard you. You want to make sure that we have enough money to do this. Um.
I didn't have anything to put in the packet.
Okay, that's fine. We can wait. We can wait. That's fine. Well, wait, I was just thinking that we would get it done. So. Okay.
Unless, unless something came through when I was out sick. I don't, I don't know.
No, no, this, this is what we've got. So, okay, that's fine.
Why don't we wait until January twenty-first?
That's fine. We'll make sure it's on the agenda for January twenty-first. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
It's a two package, that's a site, the rest.
Thanks, Gabe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gabe. So we'll move on to, um, number eight, old business. And seeing none, I don't think. And no new business?
I, it's not really the right section, but I'll squeeze it in quick. Um, I had a, actually a couple of people came to me today, Millie, and, um, the tree, I guess it's across the road from like Lindgren's. There's a huge maple tree and it's leaning across the road. And some people came to me today that said every day they watch it, it's continuing. It's big enough that if it did fall on a vehicle, whatever.
It's going into the wires.
If it's in the wires, you need the FIC.
Is that the one that's in the wires?
I believe that, but I, it's no, but it's headed towards the wires. I'm apprehensive to, to touch that. I've heard the same thing from several people.
Fox on electric.
I think they're the best guys to take it down. If that's what they think is the best thing to do.
It's not normally something that Public Works would do if, if it's, especially if it's near the wire.
With the wires.
I think the wires are across from it, but, yeah, we don't, it's rather not, yeah.
Maybe in conjunction with, they need somebody that.
We usually, what we usually do is we help them.
Sure.
So we use our backhoe to either move it or support it. Exactly, and they go use the bucket and bring it down, you know, slowly. We can't, if we cut it down, we have to cut it from the ground.
Something maybe you and Lauren can.
And that's just not, not.
Something you and Lauren can collaborate on maybe.
Yeah.
Number ten, report of town manager.
Well, we had already, we've already gone over all that ferry service.
Right.
We don't want to.
She's feeling better.
I don't want to bring that back up again.
Okay.
I think we, I think we went around and around as much as we could on that. So we know where we stand as far as what we'd like to see happen.
Uh, just to mention that we did receive that brick grant. Uh, we just received that notification today, so we'll have more information on that the next meeting as well.
Planning grant?
That's the, um, island, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's a planning grant and it, you know, that's the one that involves the other islands, but also provides us with the access to, um, technical assistance and engineering support. So for instance, you know, we could talk about, we could use, use a folk, we could have a focus for downtown if that's what we wanted to focus on, like the future of downtown or something. You know, there's things like that we can, we can do.
Cool.
And we had a presentation this morning from Woodard and Curran concerning our, it's our coastal community grant, the shore and harbor planning grant, the one we're doing for the crib work.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're moving forward with that, um, process.
Good.
Make it big enough for the hospital boat. Sorry, I couldn't resist.
Yeah.
I couldn't resist, I'm sorry. Slap my wrist, man, tell me sorry.
No, that's fine. I believe you mean, there's a lot of things said sometimes that, yeah, no, you're right, Tom, that's what it's all about.
That's what it's all about.
Sorry.
Oh, dear, what a mess.
Yeah.
Um, number eleven, report of members. Okay. And number twelve, executive session. Um, make a motion to go into executive session. Um, one.
We have Matt, but nice to meet you and thank you for.
Go ahead. One MRSA, section four oh five six A personnel matters.
Second.
Budget and wage discussion.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I got you. He's ready.
We're quite there.
Thanks, Gabe.
Thank you, Brent.
Are you, are you taking them here for lunch?